And yeah, let's start. This is about secrets of plant kingdom. We'll start with origin of earth because this is very important to know how plants evolved on this planet. As you all know, earth was originated about four thousand five hundred million years ago. And to start with, it was a ball of hot gases. And life was not possible because of the sheer temperatures on this planet. So almost first hundred million years, there was no life on earth. As for the scientist, about three thousand five hundred million years ago, life evolved on the coastal region of oceans and seas. This is now almost proved with biological and fossil evidence. And this was the accident, I must say. Because till then, there was no oxygen on planet. Even when life evolved on earth, there was no oxygen. And the primitive life form, which is called as coacervates. They used to look something like this, a small spherical microscopic, of course, structures which cannot be seen with naked eyes. And this particular organism, though it was alive, it was a living organism, it used to thrive without oxygen. Even today, we have few bacteria which can live without oxygen. They live on carbon dioxide and other gases. And they are called as anaerobic bacteria, bacteria living without oxygen. So similarly, this coacervates or first life, these are actually our ancestors. We evolved, even humans evolved from this particular unicellular organism. So the then atmosphere was something like this. It was still quite hot with lot of volcanic eruptions. By then seas and oceans were formed. And as for the theory by one Russian scientist, Mr. Oparin, it was just a physico-chemical theory and life evolved in shallow saline water on coasts of different oceans. Now, for again, for first few million years, these coacervate flourished. And they evolved and they formed different species and all were living without oxygen. After another one thousand years almost, there was one more accident on this earth, on this planet, and that was evolution of this wonder chemical called as chlorophyll. All leaves which we see around, most of the leaves, I would say, get green color due to this particular chemical called as chlorophyll. Now, why I say wonder chemical? We are here today, I can talk, you can listen, you can see me only because of this wonder chemical. Without this chemical, without chlorophyll, life on earth would be impossible. Because when they evolved, they started what is called as anaerobic respiration. And in addition to respiration, they started synthesizing their own food by a process which is called as photosynthesis. So all green leaves with the help of sunlight, water and carbon dioxide in air can prepare their own food. And this process is called as photosynthesis. Now, the very interesting fact about this process is byproduct which is generated in this process is oxygen. So in short, there was no oxygen till three thousand four hundred million years ago. These green leaves started emitting oxygen as a byproduct when they started synthesizing their own food. So now today, there is about twenty-one percent of oxygen in our atmosphere and all hundred percent of it is produced by this wonder chemical. This chemical is doing this for last three thousand, three thousand four hundred million years without any exception and with no additional energy than sunlight. Recently, during pandemic, we have realized the importance of oxygen. And the crisis which happened because of shortage of oxygen, we know that few hundred people died because oxygen was not available. So though we are so evolved with technology and science, we could not manufacture sufficient oxygen for few million peoples for few days. We just, this is very important, but this wonder chemical is doing it for three thousand four hundred million years without fail and without any breakdowns in the procedure. That's why I call this as a wonder chemical. Now, what are plants to start with? Even a school-going kid can differentiate animals and plants with few thumbnails. It's very obvious, no scientific knowledge is required. And these are few factors, few differentiating features which even a kid, as I said, can pick up very easily. Generally, all trees, all plants, I would say, are green because of the chlorophyll in the leaves. There are few leaves wherein some other pigments are prominent. And then leaf color is either red or brown or yellow, it's because of other pigments. But still in those red colored leaves, chlorophyll is always there, remember. So one is green color, second thing, all plants are stationary, right? Very important differentiating feature, animals and plants. Plants can't move from place to place in search of food, in search of mate. Or if there is a natural calamity, they cannot leave that place, move to a safer place. So they are stationary. Third, most of the plants, not all, most of them have different organs like stem, leaf, flower and fruit. And very important is all plants, at least all green plants on earth are auto-trope. Auto is self, profet is food in Greek. All green plants can prepare their own food, very important, right? So these are few obvious features, but again, there are exceptions. Everything that is green in nature is not plant, very obvious. Parakeet is green or praying mantis. An insect is green, but though it looks, it, you look at the back of this praying mantis, it's like a leaf, but it doesn't have chlorophyll. So this is definitely not a plant. And even a first standard kid can differentiate, can tell you that this is not a plant, right? So everything that is green is not plant and everything that is stationary is not plant, remember. Few, few plants can move from place to place. This is a unicellular or single-celled plant which has chlorophyll. You can see the green color like a leaf. Called as bulwarks, this plant, this is a plant, remember. Very small, microscopic, unicellular, but it has chlorophyll, so this is a plant and not animal. But with the help of tiny projections called as cilia, it can move from place to place in search of food, in search of sunlight, right? So again, there are exceptions, but at microscopic level, there is one feature that is constant which will differentiate all plants and animals on this earth. What is that feature? This is the microscopic feature, as I said, so if you see a single cell of a plant under microscope, you will always see what is called as cell, thick cell wall, which is made up of cellulose. Whereas all animal cells, they require, these cell walls are rigid because plants do not require mobility and flexibility. Whereas animals require that flexibility to, for example, muscle cells, they need to contract and expand. So we cannot afford to have a fixed rigid cell walls. All animal cells are devoid of this cell wall. So if you see a single cell of any organism under microscope, you can differentiate for sure between plants and animals. Cell wall present and cell wall absent. Cell, for those who have not done this in schools or colleges, cell is the smallest unit of any living creature, okay? Multiple cells form a tissue like our muscle tissue. Multiple tissues form an organ. Like in our arm, we have muscle tissue, bone tissue, blood cell tissues, nerves, etc. And multiple, multiple organs form an organism, right? So cell is the smallest unit of any organism. Now, again, we are learning, rather mugging this since our childhood, childhood days in our textbooks, what are, what are, what are the important uses or what are, what is the importance of plants on, on this planet? Oxygen is very obvious and as I said, plants are doing it for several million years. Other than oxygen, plants do absorb carbon dioxide and other toxic gases. This is very important. Since industrial revolution, man has started emitting tons and tons of toxic, toxic gases, including carbon dioxide, which is also toxic. All these are greenhouse gases and they cause global warming. So keep this concentration and percentage of carbon dioxide and toxic gases in check. Plants have a very important role. But these days, we are, our generation of these toxic gases, the percentage, the amount is definitely disproportionately more. So present amount of, present amount of chlorophyll in, on earth is not sufficient to absorb all these gases. So we should keep that emission in check because we have limitation for plantation. We cannot grow more trees. Now, food for entire living world comes from some plant source, remember, very important. Few people may say, I am strictly non-vegetarian, so I don't require plants. You may say that tiger never eats grass and leaves, so tiger won't require any grass or vegetation or tiger is not dependent on plant kingdom. This is not true. Because as Bible says, a very famous quote from Bible which says, "All meat is grass", remember. So even if it's tiger eating a deer, deer thrives or deer gets its energy, its muscle mass ultimately from leaves and grass. So directly or indirectly, all living organisms on earth are dependent, totally dependent on plants for their source of food, remember. Weather, as you know, depends on vegetation around us. It can be a macroclimatic or microclimatic effect. When you enter any forest, you feel good because of lot of oxygen in the air, no pollution. You feel it is definitely cooler than the adjacent city, that's because of again, microclimatic effect. And temperatures are always low. The humidity is sufficient for us for breathing. So weather depends on vegetation or plants and it is very obvious. There are thousand other products which we get from forest and you know, know this list like honey. Very important is medicines. Most of the medicines, even a locatic medicines have their origin in plants. So we are dependent on plants for thousand other products. And of course, aesthetics, this is also important. Whenever you buy a plot for your farmhouse or whenever you build your bungalow, the first thing you think of is, what should I plant here? And it should look green. So aesthetically, it should look green and this has a very important role in human psychology. You can just imagine the earth without a single tree and it will be horrible, it will be a nightmare. Now, this is today's topic, that few interesting facts about plant kingdom. It's impossible to cover all, so this is just a teaser or few thought-provoking concepts, ideas or phenomena. I'll discuss one by one. And there are many engineering wonders, I call them engineering feats in plants. Just for example, I like this very much because I read a lot about this phenomenon which is called as ascent of sap. Ascent of sap is absorption of water by any plant from ground, by its roots and transporting that water till tip of that particular plant or the tree. This is called as ascent of sap, not only water, other essential elements from soil. It may be salt, it may be element like iron or magnesium, etc. So I always give human corollary to this phenomena. This is something like a motor or pump which is pumping water from the ground up to the tip. Few trees like this, this one in the picture is called as a giant redwood tree which is from California, which can grow up to four hundred feet tall, right? So you can imagine pumping the water from ground for four hundred feet. This tree can live up to five thousand years. So it has to pump this water for five thousand years, four hundred feet without any external energy, no electricity, no diesel is required for that. There is no maintenance, no mechanic is required, there is no breakdowns in this mechanism for more than thousand years. There is no heating of motor and very important, there is no air locking in this system. Because if this happens, that tree will die. This is a wonder which humans, even scientists, even today, we have not solved this mystery. Of course, there are so many theories like capillary pressure, etc., etc. But it's still, I would say, it's a miracle, it's a wonder in plant kingdom. One more very fascinating feature which is coming up these days is plant and communication. Now, it's proved beyond doubt that plants, especially plants from forest, they communicate with each other. We know computer tech term WWW, which is World Wide Web. Similarly, in forest, they have their own WWW, that is Wood Wide Web. So these wood, these plants, these trees, they communicate with this root system which is intermingled, intercommunicating. So two adjacent trees in any forest, they do communicate with each other. It's proved by several research papers and experiments, if you cut the root system in between, if you dig a trench between two trees, two trees, this communication will stop and the tree, sometimes they die of pest attack. So it proves and that when there is a pest attack, there is some insect attack on one tree, it immediately communicates with this root system to adjacent tree that, look, be aware, there is some pest attack on me, please secrete certain toxins which trees do have so that it will repel, it will deter insect attack at least on you. So this communication is present and this is lacking in potted plants. So attack of pest is definitely more when you fought a tree or a plant in your garden. This is a branch of botany which is coming up, as I said, it is called as phyto-sociology. You know, human sociology. Phyton is plants, so plant do have social life, they have social communication. So few plants, they love to grow with some other plant. Whereas that particular plant may repel, won't like to grow with some other plant, this is proved and this is seen in forest. There are few trees which are always seen together in forest, they're growing together because they love each other, they like each other, they are friends, like in this picture. Now, coming to the competition. Competition is one of the most constant feature in any natural ecosystem. There is no ecosystem without competition. What we talk in human context, humans says that these days, there is lot of competition in students, competition is bad for their mental health, etc., etc. It's hambak. Competition is a must if you have to top in any field. And this competition is very obvious in animals. Two tiger males always fight for territory or fight for mate. So many times, a female is watching that fight and she mates with winning tiger. Such competition is, is in, even in plants. For plants, competition is mainly for sunlight, water or minerals. As in this case, this is a type of fig, you, all of you know fig. This is a sapling from Banyan family, it's not Banyan tree, but, or people tree, but same family, fig family. So this particular sapling starts growing on a tall tree branch. And from a bird, right? When bird sits on the tree, birds generally eat figs and seeds are excreted through that droppings. So through that dropping, that seed is deposited on this tall branch and here itself, this sapling has started growing. The reason behind is, it's getting sufficient sunlight. If this particular seed drops in the soil on the forest ground, there is hardly any sunlight there, so it won't thrive, it won't grow. Here, at the height of fifty, sixty feet, it is getting sufficient sunlight, so it has started growing on this host tree. Now, it flourishes here with lot of sunlight, atmospheric humidity sufficient as a source of water and it forms, it canopy on top and extensive root system from here. And after few years, you will see, this is the root system of the fig which is growing on the parent tree which is seen inside. And it literally strangulates the parent tree, engulfs it from all side and kills the parent tree. This is a fierce competition at the mercy of other. And the end product of this particular association is something like this. This is the, this is a photograph from below and the parent tree or a host tree is completely dead and rotten. What you see is a root system of the fig which is growing on the parent tree. It's not always competition, it's not always about harming somebody or killing somebody if you want to thrive. Many times, it is something called as mutualism or symbiosis, okay? In this particular association, both the organisms, they get some benefit and they grow together in this mutual, mutually beneficial association. This is a very good example, lichen. I'm not sure whether you are using lichens as condiments, it's quite popular in, in many Indian recipes. This is used in our recipes as condiments. This lichen is a symbiotic association between the green algae at the periphery and white fungus in the center. Algae can produce its food, you can see it's green, it has chlorophyll, it produces its food but it's very weak. So fungus gives moisture and protection to the algae, whereas algae provides food to the fungus. So this is mutually beneficial association. A very interesting example of this mutualism, which, when I visited East African forest or East African savanna, this is a photograph from Serengeti National Park, Tanzania. And you will see at least forty different species of acacia. You know acacia, it's fairly common dry region tree from Indian, central Indian forests. So this is one of the acacia species called as whistling acacia. If you see carefully, you can see small black dots on these trees. These are actually insect galls or ants nests. A type of ant called as crematogaster forms nest on this particular, this is a close-up of that particular nest, ant's nest. So this is a hole for that ant to get inside and come out for any reason. And this is found by modifying, by expanding the thorn of that particular tree. As I said, this is symbiosis. For symbiosis, both organisms should get benefit. Ants get a well-protected nest, well away from the ground and it gets protection from grazing animals by these sharp thorns, right? So this is the benefit for the ants. What is very interesting in this particular association is when we, you call it as a symbiosis, even this parent tree should get some benefit? That is very interesting. What scientist have observed, when I observe, when, sorry, when I visited this forest, even I saw this phenomenon once, whenever any sapling of some other tree starts growing near this parent tree, the queen ant gives some chemical message to soldier ants. Thousands of them get down from this tree and eat that sapling which gets rid of competition to the parent tree. So by this, both are benefited. Now, you must be wondering why whistling acacia? In African savanna, I don't know whether you have visited any of this savanna forest in Africa. These are rolling grasslands with intermittent acacia tree and you can see such topography till horizon. So you will see thousands of such acacias. On each acacia, you will see hundreds of such insect galls or ant galls. Each one has a small hole and when wind starts blowing and when wind enters that hole, it literally whistles. So you can imagine millions of whistles in African savanna when wind starts blowing, hence whistling acacia. This is the ant called as crematogaster ant and these are the soldier ants which live in these insect nests. One more interesting facts about plants, this is about adaptation. Adaptation is change in your structure or behavior to suit the atmospheric conditions, okay? That is the definition of adaptation. Now, few plants which grow in nitrogen-poor soil. All plants require nitrogen for their growth, remember. So if nitrogen is poor in soil, plants should search for a source of nitrogen. So this plant which is called as pitcher plant. Unfortunately, this is highly endangered plant and very few specimens are left. They are mainly seen in Kasi Hills in Meghalay these days, nowhere else now. So this plant has done wonderful modification in its leaf stalk. Leaf stalk is expanded and forms this pitcher-like structure. Pitcher is a long, narrow vessel. And this is the lead of that pitcher. Now, ages of this pitcher are very attractive and it has a very peculiar smell which attracts insects. On top of it, ages of this particular mouth are very slippery, they are coated with wax. So when insect is attracted towards this pitcher, when it sits on this particular mouth, it literally falls inside. Inside the pitcher, there are different juices and these are actually proteolytic enzymes. These are digestive enzymes which digest these insects and get, absorb the nitrogen in these insects. That's how they get this source of nitrogen from these insects. There are hundreds of adaptations in different regions shown by different plants and if I talk about adaptation, it will take one single, entire day. It's very interesting, but definitely with the permission of Shilpa, I think I'll cover this topic, very interesting topic, just adaptations in plants. Now, coming to cheating, this is of course in human context. And cheating is seen in plants. Everything is not goody-goody about plants, but cheating in human context, of course. There is an orchid, this is an orchid flower which mimics like a bee. Why this modification? By this, it attracts other bees, bees feel, other bees feel that there is a bee sitting here, so they come and try to mate with this bee. This looks like a female bee, so male bees are attracted toward this flower, they sit here. They literally try to mate with this flower, that is called a pseudo-mating or pseudo-population. This, in this mating activity, pollen grains which are seen here, yellow pollen sacs, pollen grains are transmitted from this flower to that insect's head. That poor little creature with tiny brain feels that at least tries some other flower of the same plant. That creature feels that at least this will be a small bumblebee or a bee and tries to populate with that other flower. In this act of population, it transmit pollen grains from one flower to other, okay? This is benefit, beneficial for this orchid, but this is a cruel cheating of that particular bee. Exhibitionism, again, a derogatory term used by our generation parents, especially about our teenage daughters, about their clothing styles. But believe me, exhibition is extensively seen in plant kingdom. Any such flower which is showy, attractive is nothing but exhibitionism for mating, nothing else. The only purpose of this flower is The only purpose of this flower is to attract insects. For pollination, that is for mating, that is sexual reproduction of this particular plant, right? So everything that is seen in nature like this is nothing but exhibitionism for its own benefit. And that is for reproduction. No flower on this planet blooms for humans, remember. It's for their own sake. Again, this is very interesting branch of botany which is coming up, it is extensively mentioned in Indian literature. Famous Indian poet Kalidas has written several paragraphs on this topic. How plants do have emotions and now we have realized with modern technology and research that yes, plants do have emotions. And very simple experiment which can do at home in your terrace garden, you can select two pots. Same species plants, keep them aside, try to love one plant, okay? Give extra water, give minerals, try to speak with that particular plant. Actually make love with that plant, right? And the other one, you hate that, neglect that, tap that plant. See the difference. The first one will definitely grow more, right? And this experiment is done by different botanists and they have come up with research papers, you can definitely, those who are interested can read those. And they also say that plants do have language. We have seen communication of trees in forest through root system. And they must wearing some other language, their own language. They do have preferences which I've covered in phyto sociology. Music therapy, effect of music on plant growth, flowering and fruiting is well known and it is proved beyond doubt. American police department, US police department, they have used plants as lie detectors. So any criminal under trial, there is a machine called as lie detector. And that machine can detect whether he is speaking truth or lie. So they have tried different plants, they have attached one electrode to plant, if he is saying lie. Then there are different vibrations, even you can experience, if when you are saying something which is lie. Your voice is different, vibrations are different. When you are speaking some truth, you are confident, then your voice is different. Plants can pick up these different vibrations and American police department has used plants as lie detector. Uh, very important topic, I'll, Shilpa, can I take another fifteen twenty minutes?
Uh.
You tell me.
Yes, you can take ten minutes sir, so that after question and answers, then we can.
So another ten minutes, I'll finish it quickly. Native versus exotic is very important. And I've done, recently I've done survey in my area, that is Kothu Red area, I. Did the enumeration and checklist of roadside trees in my area. And unfortunately, I found that ninety percent of planted trees by garden department are exotic, non-Indian. And it is wrong, why? These are few of the points, hundreds of animal species are dependent for their food and shelter on native plants. Not exotic plants. Of course, there are few exotic or non-native foreign plants which are naturalized and accepted by. Or insects, but that takes few, several years. So few generations in between are deprived of their diet, that is nectar and pollen grains. All native plants have their enemies, so their number is kept under control. Social and cultural association of humans is quite obvious with our own trees and plants. Traditional medicines are, are traditional know-how, traditional medicinal knowledge. Is applicable to our local trees and plants only. Few people think that exotic something from outside is beautiful, but we have equally beautiful plants. And leaf litter of native plants is easily degradable. Whereas leaf litter of exotic plant is not, few examples, this is Gulmore, many people think that from its name Gulmore is our own tree. It's wrong. Gulmore is not native, it's not Indian, it's from Madagascar. And in last fifty seven years, I haven't seen a single nest, bird's nest on Gulmore tree. Okay, so we should not plant such trees as avenue tree. A single tree, one or two trees in a campus is okay, but planting hundreds of such trees is absolutely wrong. It's not environmental mistake, it is environmental crime. Eucalyptus, as I said, it is from Australia. I was talking of leaf litter. Leaf litter of eucalyptus is not degradable because bacteria. Which degrade this particular leaf are not available in Indian soil, they are available in Australian soil. So you can plant eucalyptus in Australia but not in our country. Water hyacinth, this has become a nuisance, I won't talk much about this. Again, this is Mexican plant and I was talking about natural enemy. In Mexico, this is not a problem, environmental problem, ecological issue. Because there is an insect, a small beetle which eats water hyacinth and keeps its number in control, in check. In India, we don't have that beetle. We have so many beautiful native plants and flowers, why not go for this? Now, there are, there are forests in oceans everywhere, people feel that forest mean land, forest mean kana, forest mean rantambor, no. In fact, eighty percent of oxygen in our atmosphere is produced by ocean plants, not by land plants. So they are equally or rather more important. So ecological conservation of oceans and seas is equally important. I'll skip few slides, this is, I think, last thing which I want to cover that about conservation. It's okay, we know importance of trees, we know that there are certain wonders, certain mysteries in plant kingdom. And all of us know that we should preserve, we should conserve. To conserve a tree, very important thing, you need not plant a tree, even if you save a tree, it is good enough, number one. You need not plant hundreds of tree if you want to conserve them, you can modify your lifestyle and conserve the tree. And I can give at least hundred different things which you can do from dawn to dusk to protect your tree cover. But it is out of scope of this lecture, Shilpa has already given me five minutes now, I think she will stop me after that.
No, you can tell.
My point was you can modify your lifestyle and conserve the tree. Simple thing about electricity. More electricity, requirement of more electricity is requirement of one more dam. One dam is submergence of several hundred or thousand hectares of pristine forest. All dams are unfortunately in forested areas because that is the catchment area of the rivers. So one dam is submergence and destruction of that forest and millions of plants forever. So if you conserve electricity by any means. Now if you switch unnecessary fan or unnecessary light where you are sitting now. You will save one branch of a tree in some forest, remember, right? So there are certain, hundreds of things which can do. Use of lifts, I always tell my patients in different hospitals. Use lifts, it's good for your health, it's good for your, our environment and it is good for economy as well. I've seen, this is a habit, whenever you see lift, even youngsters, even for one story building, they use lift. Again, this is environmental crime. Crime, you can do that. Me myself, I don't use lift up to eleven story building in Pune, I never use lift. So if you can do, I can do that, I am sure you can do that and better than me, right? So use of lift, then consumerism. Consumerism, I won't explain this much. But you know what is consumerism, consumerism and what I call a thought pollution is the worst pollution, okay? Water pollution, air pollution, wind pollution, everything is due to our thought pollution. If you modify your thoughts, make them environment friendly, I call this as a green thinking. Behind each and every act, there should be green thinking. There should not be anthropocentric thoughts, the next point. Whenever I take any group to any forest and whenever, whenever I show them some interesting plant in the forest. Their first question is not what about the name of that tree, family of the tree, can I grow this tree in my backyard, no. The first question is generally, what is the use of this plant, what is the use of tree for us, for humans? This is anthropocentric, but I always give them this answer, yes, this tree is giving you oxygen right now and it is free of cost. Right? Tourism, I'll talk about this later. Tree cutting, it is very obvious, as I said. Tree saved is tree gained. So you need not plant trees, even if you save a tree in your area, that is good enough. Uh, about auto vehicles, as far as possible, use your muscle power rather than fuel power. Lifts, packaged foods, packaged foods requires lot of energy, it pollutes your environment. It is not good for health, it is not good for your pocket. Use of tissue papers. How many of you just give honest answer to yourself, how many of you are using handkerchief today? Or using tissue papers, okay? One tissue paper or at least hundred tissue paper is one branch of tree. If you use tissue, if you use handkerchief, you will save trees. Deos and other cosmetics, ultimately they go to river, they go to oceans. And ultimately they will affect adversely ecosystems in seas and oceans. Hot water bath, very simple thing. A place like India, a tropical country, at least six months. You can afford to have bath with room temperature water. This is Indian mindset. That bath has to be with hot water. If you see your electricity bill. Major component of your bill is from hot water geezer and boilers. So we are using lot of energy electricity for heating up that water. At least youngsters, at least healthy population of India should not use hot water at least for six months in a year. It will save lot of electricity and ultimately it will save our forests. Last but not the least, I always give this example of pressure cooker. Most of you are using pressure cookers at home for cooking dal and rice, this is very popular in Indian homes. What is the principle of cooking anything under pressure? When you cook something under pressure, time required is less, less time is less fuel. Okay, so whenever you give whistle to your pressure cooker, you are releasing that pressure. And to bring that pressure cooker back to that pressure, you are consuming more energy. So remember, your pressure cooker should never whistle, okay? You can reduce the flame when that whistle start vibrating. People ask me what about dal, cooking dal, it requires at least six whistles, I said it's not required. Just soak that dal half an hour in any water before cooking, that's good enough. So if you spread this word, if you follow this from today. Then you can just imagine in all household, if we stop whistling your cookers, you can whistle, not the pressure cooker. You can do that. By that, you will save tons and tons of butane. Which is used in a cylinder which is not renewable. Tomorrow, you will consume entire butane on this earth. Ultimately for our source of fuel, we'll have to go back to the forest, to the trees. So if you want to conserve them, use pressure cooker judiciously, you can read any pressure cooker manual, nowhere it is mentioned that give so many whistles. This is consumerism, I'll skip these slides, this is very important, non-conventional source of energy is a myth, remember. Windmills is a myth. Manufacturing of any windmill and transporting that windmill from its manufacturing site to the installation site. Require so much energy that no windmill generates so much energy in its lifetime. So it's a myth, remember. It would be logical. If a male windmill and female will be, which are rotating side by side. If somehow they mate with each other and produce their siblings, windmills at their foot. Then yes, then it is logical, not otherwise. This is very important slide. As I said, flowers are meant for trees and insects and flower and the birds, not for us. Flowers are reproductive organs of plants, when you pluck, just remember this sentence, very important. When you pluck a flower from any tree, you are plucking its reproductive organ, as simple as that. And you are depriving millions of insects and birds from their staple diet, okay? So again, plucking a flower for any reason, forget about garlanding or forget about giving bouquet. Forget about your Valentine Day roses, forget about that, even for God, it is not pardonable. It is environmental crime. Again, I'll skip this, I'll end with this. Beautiful quote by one industrialist, he was industrialist but ultimately here realized what we are doing is wrong, very important, very interesting. And a nice quote, man is the most insane species, he worships an invisible god and slaughters a visible nature. Without realizing that this nature he slaughters is this invisible god he worships. I think I'll end here.